The time is 5:30 PM on Monday, November 13th, and I'd like to call this work session to order. First, on our agenda, our city updates. So, Ms. Solano. We're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair of City Council. I just have a couple of updates from the city this evening. And the first we'll start with an ARPA update. On tonight's agenda, there include, there includes three different ARPA items. The first is a resolution of $350,000 for new IT fiber. It's been sitting on the pending, pending items for the last several weeks. It is ready to move over to request council's favorable approval of this item. It will provide the new fire, fire, excuse me, fiber infrastructure on the east side. That includes Fire Station Number Six and also some of the required rerouting of the fiber. So they'll move it to underground rather than where it is right now. A next second resolution on the agenda this evening is for $80,000, and that's for additional dollars required for the installation or construction of the broadband infrastructure on the west side. That is going to go underneath the railroad track. It came in at additional cost of 80,000. And the third item is on for first reading tonight of $438,271. And that is the sub recipient agreement to purchase the property at 1302 East Fifth Street from the Pueblo Community Health Center. And Donald Moore and the mayor presented a work session just a few weeks ago on that item. And those are the three ARPA items for this evening. That's all of the ARPA update. And then I have one other that is on the slide here on the screen. And we, as we moved into November here, the plan in process waiting for city council's approval of the 2024 budget is to the your forward, the your idea, your neighborhood in the process to gain applications for review committee. That application is online and ready for our residents to apply. There will be nine and nine residents selected for the review committee. And is this application process will be open from November the first through the 30th. The flyers should show, and as you scroll down on the website also is a QR code. And if you have any questions, you can email or call the mayor's office or email youridea@pueblo.us for clarification as to the application process also. We'll be moving into in the coming weeks, the application review team to select those nine members. And I'll be back next week with the recommendation to the council on who, who and how we select that committee. And that does conclude the city updates tonight. Do you have questions or direction for the mayor's office?
Thank you, Ms. Solano. Questions, Counselor Flores?
What is the minimum amount under the $1 million? Is there a minimum?
No, the committee did not recommend to council a minimum amount for there may be small projects. And then there may be up to, you know, larger projects. So there is not a minimum amount.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Solano, for that update. We're going to move along on our agenda. So our first presentation is our, is about veteran recognition recommendation from the Tria Chapter 20. So can I have Mr. McClelland and Mr. Sandman to the podium, please? Also, they have, before council, they have distributed these folders to reference during their presentation. And you want to make sure that your mics are on. And if you could say, ma'am, if you could say your name for your full name for the record, that would be great.
Jessica Sanchez, on behalf of Mr. Salmon, who's also here.
We are honored here. And in your lifetime, you're looking at the fifth generation. Okay, you're looking at the fifth generation, direct blood descendant of Warren Dockham at the Rosaline Cemetery. So it's an honor to have her with us. She was an unexpected guest. But it's, it's rare when you can see somebody, a descendant, that's 100 years later. Quite an honor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members, honored guests. My name is Bob McClelland. I'm with the Retired and Listened Association here in Pueblo. We are a veterans group, 501(c). We have Mr. Earl Sandman behind me here. He's also with Tria. And again, reiterate Jessica Sanchez, who's the direct fifth generation, direct blood descendant of Warren Dockham. Our purpose here today is to bring awareness to the contribution of our Civil War Medal of Honor soldier buried at Rosaline Cemetery in 1921. He has been largely largely ignored up until here recently. If you look at section four of your handout, it's got to do with where we started at, the flag, and where we're at today. We present to the council the following suggestions about placing Dockham's name on the side of a fire, side of the city fire trucks. And I think I gave each one of you a picture so we know what we're talking about. And in order, in order to all, to honor him. And also, if some, at some point in time in the future, if you ever thought about naming fire stations after recipients, we would appreciate your consideration on that. We would like to call to your attention the plaques on page three at the base of the Statue of Liberty in front of the courthouse. And on page one, the proclamation from the city. This handout is very comprehensive on how our mission unfolded when we got started. We started from dirt out there at Rosaline, sunken graves. There was nothing there. And I, I highly recommend right now, if you haven't been to Rosaline Cemetery, to like, take a look at this, this Dockham grave site, do it now. Because we've got flag poles out there. We've got flags encompassing the graves. We've got wreaths on the graves. It is something that, that you could only see in Washington DC, but it's right here in Pueblo in your own backyard. Go see it as soon as you can. At this time, it's my honor and pleasure to introduce you to our, again, the fifth generation, direct descendant of Warren Dockham, Jessica Sanchez.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Jessica Sanchez, that's great, great, great grandfather, in case anybody was wondering how many greats that is. I've figured that out. Warren Castle Dockham not only deserves acknowledgement for military duty and valor during several battles throughout the Civil War, most notably this battle of Sailors Creek, but also for his accomplishments after the war was over. Accomplishments that are recorded as, but are not limited to county judge, community board leader, father, friend, rancher, merchant, and postmaster, all while limited, or I'm sorry, all while, all while doctors repeatedly advised him to take it easy due to the war injury he sustained in his lower leg area. Nonetheless, he continued an unwavering duty as postmaster, educator, and rancher. Stories of him and his wife Sarah Dockham trickle throughout several historical books, newspapers, letters, and documents, providing evidence to his hospitality, compassion, and guidance to other ranchers, travelers, partners, and employees, as well as his dedication to the people of the towns and counties he helped establish everywhere when he stopped, while he stopped and carved out pieces of history. In his later years, his adventures and journey brought him to the newly established state of Colorado. He fell in such adoration of the vast region, he had his wife exhumed, along with their toddler daughter, becoming one of the first legal exhumations recorded in Western Frontier. Dockham and his son are both buried next to his wife, Sarah Dockham and baby Bessie, in their final resting place of choice, Rosaline Cemetery, right here in Pueblo. The honorable warranty Dockham's impact spanned across the nation through wars, famine, economic growth, social development, and aid for nearly the eight decades. He continues to educate the public and our family through the history that we have found. He was a prominent man focused on innovation and prosperity and not fame and self-praise. It was very hard to find a lot of the information. He taught Pueblo migrants and United States immigrants to read and write and provided free legal advice, requirements, filling their land descriptions and properties. Dockham also helped many needy families survive the harsh Colorado winters by providing necessary provisions. As do the men and women of the fire department, Dockham's actions were always within the welfare of his family, neighbors, and fellow citizens of his community, no matter where he was. His sixth generation grandsons, my boys, are enlisting in January. One strives for a career as a fighter fighter and looks forward to the possibility of one day riding in a fire engine with his ancestors' name reflected proudly on the side. We ask you to look at this and take it into consideration.
One last thought. I'm nurturing her two, her twins to join the Air Force in January. So that's a, that's a plus.
Well, thank you, Mr. McClelland and Mr. Sandman for your service. And thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for being here.
Thank you.
Questions from council?
I had one, I was able to peruse that letter. I'm a fast reader. And it was an actual letter written by Mr. Dockham, right? That's in this packet. It's a three-page letter and.
That's actual from him.
Yes. Right, but, but I, what I, what I noticed, it just jumps out of the page. He said nothing about why he got the Medal of Honor. I mean, he just kind of passed it over like it was no big deal.
Mr. Warren Dockham, he was the person or the individual that captured the flag at Sailors Creek. So they had two attempts to capture the flag, which it would have ended that battle because that, back then, that's how you won the battle was you got the flag.
Three people went forward. Only one came back. The other two got shot. The significance of this battle is that the Confederacy lost 8,000 troops, 80-some officers. They captured 10,000 Confederate soldiers. And because of this, it was, it was direct during when General Lee surrender to Grant two weeks later. That's how, that's how important this battle was.
Yeah, it's really impressive.
And if you can imagine. And actually, he was 17 when he ran away from home. Can you imagine back in 19, a 17-year-old kid telling your folks, "Adios, I'm going to join, join the military"? Him and two other boys lived.
On top of that, once he did it, he went home. And then he returned to battle and he was injured in another famous battle in history.
And at 18, he was a prisoner of war.
He was a prisoner of war. And then by the time he was released, he had been injured, a prisoner of war, and he continued on to become a judge, a teacher, a homesteader. It's been really amazing to watch the history of our family grow.
Incredible story.
When CF and I was blossoming here, and immigrants, by the millions, were coming from Europe to Pueblo. Okay? During this time period, during the early 1900, 1920s, he was offering education to the migrants from Mexico and all the immigrants from Europe in order to learn to speak English. And that was his passion. He, his, his whole life was, was a service. Those are yours to keep. I guarantee you, you'll treasure those for a long time.
If you're interested in more information, you're welcome to contact me and we can be all kinds of good stuff.
Thank you.
Other questions for Tria? I, I guess I, my question is for city staff. It's clear that the ask, and it may be, can you clarify, Ms. Sanchez, that the ask is to include Mr. Warren Dockham's name on the, on all city fire trucks?
Yes, ma'am.
Given that that's the ask, Ms. Solano, how do we move forward?
With, without knowing 100%, I'd ask for council's direction, but also I'd have to reach back out. Is there, is there protocol or processes in the, in the fire department or with respect to their accreditation policies and procedures that we'd have to, we'd have to look into? But we could certainly return and ask the fire chief to do that. Is that, Barb's here. Is that, did I answer correctly, Barb? Spot on, she says. But we can certainly take your direction to look into it.
Do you have anything to add, Chief?
Every truck we order now, moving forward, has the Home Harrows, the four Medal of Honors. On them. Is, was that the question or?
Oh, just about the process moving forward to include the fifth Mr. Warren Dockham.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I missed that part. Um, yeah, I'm not sure. I would have to check and see if there's anything procedurally that we have to verify.
Great. So thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
So the question that on the table is to give direction to staff to look more into the process of including Warren Dockham on to city fire trucks. Counselor Martinez Ortega?
Yes.
Counselor Graham?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Counselor Flores?
I'm a yes, but there could be, I mean, it could be something else besides a fire truck. Couldn't it be a building or?
We request that in the future, if there is another.
If you were, with all these new fire stations being built, that's just a thought for you guys.
Yeah, we're just, I'm just trying to make it a little bit wider and broader than just.
I like wide and broad. I would say yes, we would wish that as well.
Counselor Maestri? Yes, so it's unanimous that direction will be for city staff to look into it. A major congratulations for pushing along this effort for Tria. And then just congratulations, I guess, for giving recognition and accolades to Warren Dockham. I'm sure that he would appreciate it.
Please go out and see the grave site.
And that's at Rosaline?
Yeah. We've, we've got the, we just replaced the, the flags, the Medal of Honor flag and the US flag. We've got flags wrapped all the way around the graves. We put a wreath on the, on the headstone. It is, it is priceless. One picture's worth a thousand words. Why look at television in Washington DC when you can see it in your own backyard?
Excellent.
So please go.
Yeah, thank you. Well, thank you for your presentation. We'll have, I'm sure city staff will follow up with Tria or even Ms., you, Ms. Sanchez, about next steps. Thanks. Okay, moving along, we're hearing from our friends at the Housing Authority presenting their annual report, which is also in front of us on the dais. So Mr. Tracheo and Ms. Rivas to the podium, and then whenever you're ready.
Test. Evening, ladies and gentlemen, and certainly Madam Chair, members of council, city staff and guests. It's an honor to be here this evening with you all. And have the opportunity to take a few minutes to share with you some of the developments that are taking place relative to the Housing Authority of the City of Pueblo. Before we jump into some of our prepared remarks tonight, I also want to take a moment to recognize some of the leadership team members that I have with me here in the audience. Certainly, we have with us representing our commissioners, Mrs. Phyllis Sanchez, who's joining us on behalf of our commissioners. Obviously, Mrs. Patricia Rivas is our Assistant Executive Director. And behind me, and I'll ask him to just give a wave as I make mention of their name, Mr. Joe Caricato, our Director of Planning and Development. Mr. Randy McCall, our Director of Finance. Mr. Tony Lignan, our Director of Human Resources. And Ms. Luann Beard, our Executive Assistant. These individuals help in everything that I'm about to share with you tonight in making sure that our programs are serving our community. They're on track, taking guidance, looking at new changes that come down from HUD in terms of guidance or others to help make sure that these programs have the greatest ability to impact our community. Certainly also want to just echo our thanks to you all as city council members. Much of what we do in one of the projects I'll highlight here tonight certainly would not be possible without your gracious support in the past. I also want to make mention, because either, these are some individuals that we've had the ability to work with. And I think it's important to recognize that on a daily basis that our city staff that we engage with from the Housing Authority perspective also help to, they see the vision. They see the importance of the work that we're doing and do their part to the best of their ability. And that's certainly, the mayor's office has been supportive of our efforts when we have questions. Ms. Barrett Odom, Andrew Hayes, Chuck Roy, and Mark Guerrero specifically, along with their staff members. We wanted to just publicly acknowledge and recognize for their great work. When we have questions, they're there to respond. When we have an issue, they're a part of leaning into that conversation to say, how can we work around this as a community? And so we just wanted to, again, acknowledge and thank them for their great support and the great work that they do on a daily basis and felt it important that you know, as well as council members. Jumping into the report tonight, we have just a few items we'd like to share with you from a look back perspective of 2022. And we'll talk about the the annual report that is before you hear this evening. We'll also highlight just a few areas of the most current development that is underway right now as we speak, that's nearing completion that we're really excited about. And just a few notes about the future and what's coming for our agency as we look to 2024 and beyond. In this particular document that you have prepared before you highlighting the activities of 2022, our team remains steadfast in our pursuit to successfully carrying out the work to demolish and rebuild the Sunger de Cristo apartments. That has been the huge lift on our end. And that has been a process in working with our federal agencies and partners, building the capital stack in order to make that possible, along with your support, all the way down to then just the contractors and the many subcontractors that we work with on a daily basis to do all of that. And we'll certainly jump into that a little bit more. We've also successfully had in operation the first two phases within 2022. We crossed that finish line of successful operation for Uplands Townhomes and Mountain View Townhomes, two other projects in this entire four-phase project that was completed. But certainly, as we look to the development of our agency and the history, we were proud to be able to help usher that in for our residents and certainly for the community of Pueblo. Obviously, as I mentioned, this particular project is a part of a much bigger project that we focus on from year to year. But within 2022, we also began to lay the groundwork in 23 for looking more closely at our community and the programs within our portfolio and how we could take those to the next level. And so I'll let Mrs. Rivas tell you a little bit about the, the statistics on page two of your report that kind of just highlight the residents that our staff are working with on a daily basis and the services supported. So with that, I'll yield the floor to Mrs. Rivas.
Thank you, Stephen. Again, what we're looking at here is our statistics for our different programs that we offer through the Housing Authority. Public housing are units that are owned and operated by the Housing Authority. They are HUD subsidized. They come up from through the Section Nine program out of HUD. We have currently 742 units in there, and the only way you can get in there is through a waitlist. And right now, that's what we're serving. We have an abundance of ones, twos, threes, and plexes and four plexes, three plexes, row housing that we have under that portfolio. And again, you have to be low income. It's called a low income program. So your rent is based on your income on that particular program. The next program I'm going to talk about is our Housing Choice voucher program. That is under the Section Eight part of HUD. And that is tenant-based, which means that it is a Housing Choice voucher program where you, the tenant, can choose and the, the assistants will follow you wherever you go. Unfortunately, as everybody else is witnessing through the nation, there's a shortage of places for them to go. So we really need to start building more affordable housing so that we can get all these tenants some housing. We are right now currently over 1,200 tenants using those vouchers, but that also includes what we call a project-based voucher program where you can utilize a project base. It stays with the project, but in two years, you can request your Housing Choice voucher to move it around, move on with it. And we are looking at those. And under that, we also have what they call Housing Ownership Program. We call it HOP. And right now, we have 28 tenants who are trying to be homeowners in that program. And then lastly, we do offer our layered programs, which is Lytech, which Stephen has mentioned, our Uplands and our Mountain View. And when it's layered, it is coming through many sources of, whether it's coming from home funds, state, HUD, CHAPA, and we have our investors included in that. So we get what we call a Lytech program and tax credit. So it's really involved trying to get tenants in there. But it is project-based voucher or project-based rental assistance programs. And again, it's the ability to, it's get them on their way. They use it for two years and then they can get off the program and use the Housing Choice voucher. But also, under the Affordable Housing Program, you are eligible according to your income, but your rent is not based on your income. So you're looking at tax credit. And we have our Oakshire Hills, our villas at the Oakshire. And so it, we have a lot of homes out there under that program, as well as the Santa Fe Crossing, as well as the Rude Complex. So we do have a lot of tax credit out there. Again, it is affordable. And, and under the Affordable Program, you can use a voucher in that program. So they can get a subsidized assistance if that tenant has a voucher. Otherwise, it's considered affordable and it does come under Affordable rate. Right now, we have over 600 units in that program. So that is the programs that we offer. We offer, we house a lot of head of households, our females, at 70, 75% of the, of our program under public housing are females head of households. And we do have two, what we call 202 pracs, and they are completely elderly units. They're your next or neighbor over here. The Union Plaza in our Richmond. They are owned by the SRDA, but we do manage them and you have to go through our waitlist to get in there. But you must be 62 years of age and income eligible to be in those units. And that's the programs that we offer under all our portfolios that we have currently.
Thank you, Ms. Rivas. And a part of that is just to help understand that within that term of housing, there are multitude of programs that we administer. And so our portfolio is very diverse. But at the same time, depending upon the need of the individual or the family coming in, will drive exactly what type of program that might benefit them the most and then how we take them through. So this particular report helps to give us a snapshot of those clients that we work to serve. What I'd like to do is jump also now to, and I believe, thank you, didn't see this earlier, to also jump to the Crawford Development. This is one of the biggest right now that we have. And I'm sure many of you have heard about that. If you've driven down Prairie, you may have seen a lot of activity there. And at one point, that road may have been closed off for a period of time while we worked on some of those infrastructure pieces. But while I kind of give you some information, what's up on the screen here, and I'm hoping it displays for you, is just an aerial view of this development to give you kind of a bird's eye shot of what this development is doing on our south side of the community. Some of you have had the opportunity to come out and tour the site. And certainly, I will share some details here in just a minute about another invitation we'd like to extend to you all to come out and see that. But as you see, this particular development was replacing the public housing units that we had in service there since the 1950s. That was the very first project that our agency undertook with 224 total units in operation there. And then at one point, we helped to sunset some of those and relocate residents for the Prairie Widening Project. And then here recently took advantage of what's called the Rental Assistance Demonstration Program through HUD to renovate these and really renovate, when I say that word, from the ground up, as you see, from the infrastructure that's beneath ground all the way to the existing structures. We felt it was time. Those units that you see in this particular shot to the south there certainly served our community and they served them well. But this was an opportunity, we felt, to leverage available resources and bring those into our community here. One of the things that I will highlight that I think is important for us as a community to take note of is that when one of these projects are put together and when we develop what's called the capital stack, investors and others that look at Pueblo, look at what amenities are around this particular facility. And I think one of the things that myself and my team are always very proud of is the fact that we get to sing the praises of those many amenities that surround this particular property here. So when we talk about families that will be in these townhomes, you're talking about access to a grocery store, access to pharmacies, access to educational institutions and resources such as libraries. And most of these resources and the many others are less than just a mile away, a mile and a half from this particular area. We also look at bus routes that can help individuals if they're needing access to employment, where that can go. And on this particular site, which you don't necessarily see in the shot, is also home to the Boys and Girls Club and the Southside Child Daycare Center. So we also have some additional resources on site. We also have some of our property managers that are here on site. And so these particular properties that are being developed that you see here, we believe sit very well in our community in a very rich resource section. And so we're always proud to be able to highlight that. And that's certainly not the work of the agency, but it's the work of Pueblo. Over the years, as these things have come into existence, that when you really take a look at it from a 30,000-foot view, a bird's eye view, if you will, really points to and helps lend itself to our ability to continue doing this work. And so this particular area here, again, just gives you that shot. And we were happy to do that. Thanks to our P and D team for their help in developing this particular video. These sites also have in them some of those latest construction advancements relative to our local codes that we also have to follow as it relates to construction and putting these units together. And so we are very happy that those are included in this particular development as well. And as I mentioned, they replace the units that we've had in existence. On the screen, you just see a shot of some of the finished products from a ground level. And obviously, some of them from the early stages of the foundation, all the way up to where we were getting ready to wrap them and do the work from there. This, as I mentioned, is the third phase of a four-phase project. And so at some point in time, we will be back before you sharing our anticipated plans and timelines to then pursue what we call the sitter phase. That will be the last rounding out of, I believe, 47 units in that particular development to then have a completely redeveloped neighborhood, if you will, in that entire area. So right now, we are actively putting those plans together within our 2024 timeline of what that will look like, how those will be constructed. And what's important to note is that the remaining residents in our public housing units are those eventual residents. So long as all of, you know, the spacing and bedroom mix is satisfactory to what the resident needs, they are the occupants of this. And so that remaining phase, once complete, we will then have a waitlist developed in community. I'll put that out to our community and they can certainly apply from there. Want to certainly be mindful of time. And so I'll move to our next slide here. Looking ahead, so we've kind of given you a snapshot of 2022 and where we've come from, the majority of our focus and intent in 2023. And certainly now looking to the future of where we anticipate going. We know, as Mrs. Rivas indicated, that, you know, these vouchers and the availability of units in our community are important. And so we are working with our partners from the Denver Field Office of HUD to host. of HUD to host a number of landlord engagements. Because when it comes to the vouchers, it certainly is a partnership and a relationship that we believe is critical to have with our landlords in the community. And so we will be having some of those outreach events. We did conduct one in July of 23, proved to be very successful. HUD reached back out and said we would be interested in doing more. And so we are taking a regional approach, and we're also hosting that here in Pueblo, so we're excited to do that. We're also going to continue to reach out and work with state agencies and partners to further expand the opportunities. As you heard, our portfolio is very diverse, and so our ability to look at different programs or availability of funds within each of those, as we look to the future beyond 2024, certainly something that we want to make sure we're positioned to do within 2024. And the last thing I'll mention is working with other associations, such as the National Association of Housing Redevelopment Officials, to benchmark ourselves against others around the state and to then subsequently look at those across the country and say, what else is there that they are doing that is innovative and creative that we can possibly replicate here within Pueblo to help us meet the housing need? We certainly understand we're not the only ones. We do this in collaboration with many. You all, certainly some of our friends in the audience from Health Solutions are a part of that to an extent, and we are committed to continuing to do just that. So with that, I will close with the way that I opened, and again, that is a sincere thanks to you all for your support, for your continued work with us and to our community partners. This is certainly not something that we do alone, but we are happy to carry that torch and continue to do all that we can to house the community of Pueblo. So with that, I'll conclude and open it for questions. Thank you again.
Well, great, and congratulations, Ms. Rivas and Mr. Trujillo for all that tremendous work. Questions from Council? Council Martinez Ortega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Stephen and Ms. Rivas, for that presentation. That was phenomenal. You know, that the 600 units that you're going to be that you're ramping up towards, correct? That's with the all four phases and the 47 completed?
There will be 220 total on that particular site. The 600 units referred to in this one is our current, what's called low-income housing tax credit developments. So these are projects throughout the community. Some of those are Santa Fe, on Santa Fe, on the east end of town. So there's a multitude of properties that make that number up.
If there's, if there's any other property owners that want to get involved in that program, how would they go about getting ahold of you?
So certainly can just, you know, Google us. There's a main number there. They can call our central management office. Route their call either to my office or to our planning and development, and we'd be happy to help answer some of those questions and look at that. We oftentimes will sometimes refer landlords and others to HUD because in some cases, they may be a landlord or they want to have a property that they own developed. And so they can certainly pursue some of those resources as the owner of that. In many of these cases, the agency is viewed as the owner, and that's how we make application. And so if there's interest in them doing that, we're happy to point them in that direction if it doesn't apply to us.
That's great. And how much? How many jobs do you think that you've, you've helped sustain throughout this whole process? Do you have like a number on jobs and and how much money you've been able to put back into the community?
You know, at the, at the top of my head, we have the data, and I could actually send Council a slide because we have done that in conjunction with our consultant. We've actually done an economic impact to that, and I can tell you it's in the millions and the hundreds of jobs. Through all three of the phases, I don't have that information readily available, but I can certainly make note to follow up with you because that is something that we're extremely proud of, and that certainly the reason we're developing now is because it becomes a part of our application in the subsequent phase to say, here's everything we've done up until now. So, but I can tell you it's extremely positive. It was great to see that that has been housed here, and I think it's off the top of my head, about 98% of our contractors on this project are from Pueblo. Acorn Construction is the general contractor, and then subsequent subcontractors are from here in Pueblo. And from my understanding, there's a few from outside, and that's just because of the trade or the what they were doing as part of the project. But I can get you that information, and we're proud to follow up on that.
That's phenomenal. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
Counselor Ford?
Yes. When you said that you have a waiting list on not only the low income but on the vouchers, do you keep a number on that? Do you, do you know? Are we talking about hundreds, thousands, you know?
Currently, we have the waiting lists are closed because of the fact that as vacancies come up, we're using our current waitlist. And currently, I would say we probably have close to 100 or more on that. But as far as the vouchers, we haven't, let's see, when did we? It was in May of last year that we opened up the waitlist, but I don't intend to opening it up until maybe the first of the year, as we see vouchers moving out because I don't want to give somebody hope when there's no inventory for them to get. And as, but we have been seeing lately where it's starting to move. So that's a good thing. So hopefully, we can get them to move because it, it's a, you have to be low income, but you have to be able to, to be eligible because HUD will not let you pay more than 40% of your adjusted annual income for rent. And when you have somebody who is very, very low income, that's impossible to do. So currently, right now, HUD is putting out waivers for us to increase it, but all we, all we're doing at that point is we're looking at rent burden to the tenant, right? So, but we're working with the landlords, and they're working with us where we will negotiate on their behalf. Can you bring this down? Can you pay these utilities? And it's working. So I think with the where we had that landlord fair in July, it really did help, and I'm hoping that when we do one again next year, that it's going to really help out again because it's just, you know, you're getting paid 70% of your rent through housing. You're guaranteed that because we will pay at least 70% of that rent. But right now, the waiting lists are closed, and we have several different waitlists. As these projects come up, I have to have a separate waitlist for each program. So I have a Section Eight waiting list, I have a public housing waiting list. I have a waiting list for Union Plaza in Richmond, the 202 Prax. And then you have a waiting list for Uplands, Mountain View, and Crawford as the programs dictate that I have to have.
And one other note that I'll make to that, if I may, Councilman Flores, is that we are also deploying a new way by which community members, should they need housing, can apply. And so in the past, that's been a paper application form primarily. However, now we're going in to utilize technology to where we have what's called Rent Cafe. It's an application that if residents choose, they can apply through a mobile device. If they're unable to, we'll have kiosks set up to where they can go to a kiosk and certainly do that because there's a lot of information that'll have to be presented at that time. And if those are not available, certainly our office will always be available to have those one-on-ones with our intake technicians to do that. And we're working to really, we have to purge those lists and review those lists every so often to maintain communication. So once they apply, it's important that if they are unable, if we're unable to meet that housing need then and there, we have to maintain current communication and contact. And so every year, we go through that process, and in 2024, we hope to refine that more. So that way, if something changes, whether it be a mailing address or a phone number, they will have their portal that they can log into in order to do that change right then and there. And we don't lose contact. That's been one of the difficulties in that list, is we lose contact for one reason or the other. And then when that opportunity arises, two things, either they don't, no longer need housing, and we know that housing is sometimes a point in time. We need it today, right? Not two months down the road or something to that effect. Or two, we've lost contact with them or an address change, and where we're sending information or trying to get back in touch with them is no longer current. And then a year down the road, they'll call back, and we've, we've got that gap. So we're hoping that these systems will help us to maintain that list more accurately currently and more, and in a faster manner to maintain that communication.
Is there, is there a formula that HUD uses as to how many vouchers the city of Pueblo gets? Or is that, is that an unlimited amount or?
Well, I certainly, I could maybe go out on a limb and say, we wish we could have unlimited to serve all the needs and say everybody is met, but there is a formula that HUD uses in order to calculate as an agency on our end, how many we would be able to administer, and it has to do with historical data and other components that they look at. And what Mrs. Rivas said, right now, we've got over 1,200 vouchers at play throughout the community. And certainly, we have capacity to grow, but that's where that takes the work and partnership with our landlords to help do that. And so these outreach, outreach events will be critical, and if we can demonstrate the ability or the need, if you will, I would propose that we could probably ask the question to go more. But until such time, that's kind of where we are right now.
My last question has to do with, I guess, cooperating with other organizations that also provide housing. I'm thinking of our own Department of Housing. I'm thinking of Neighbor Works. I'm thinking of Posada. Is there, is there any value in bringing all of you together and working on a project that would be larger in scope? And I'm wondering if there's any of that going on now, or whether or not you see an opportunity there?
Well, I certainly can't speak for the other agencies, but I will tell you, we are a very willing partner to lean into those conversations and determine if there's additional resources or opportunity we can leverage by coming together. We do work closely with them now through the Continuum of Care and other community partnerships that we're a part of. And I would say there might very well be the potential to have that discussion and say, what else might be there that we could possibly leverage with one another? We are partners with Posada on some different things. We work with them through vouchers. We also work with developers like Fuel and Iron, where obviously that project was built and put together, but we manage the 28 units based on our experience and our staff that we have. And so we are always open to hear what those opportunities may be, because at the end of the day, our interest is not whose logo is on top, but how do we get that family in the unit and housed?
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you.
Counselor Maestri?
I've been to many of your properties, and they're very well-kept. But I'd like a little bit more consideration given to the West Side recreational center.
Yes.
I mean, I drive past it all the time. I drive through there. And there's a lot of weeds. I mean, it almost looks like there's, it's just abandoned.
Yeah.
And so it would be nice to see it spruced up and kept well.
Yes, and I appreciate that question, Ms. Maestri. And I know you and I have, excuse me, Councilman Maestri, you and I have had some conversation on that, and I neglected to make mention of the fact that within 2024, our anticipation is that it'll be operational for our community. We actually had our leadership retreat and our board retreat there in a way to highlight that facility and some of the others, because that is an amenity that we want to be able to get back online and allow for the community to engage as well. It is also starting off now, I believe, if not already, because the FEC, the Financial Empowerment Center, has started. That is one of the co-location sites. And so when you walk into the door immediately to the left, that front office space is earmarked for the FEC to be there. So more of that to come, and I appreciate that. We will certainly take your advice and continue to take a look at that.
Yes, just regular maintenance would be nice on the exterior.
Thank you. Yep.
That was actually one of my questions, Stephen, is how's the Fuel and Iron management going? I know that that's one of the newest locations and
Well, every
property.
Absolutely. And if you've not been in, please, again, give us a call. We'll be happy to meet you for lunch and then take you up to the other property, but it, obviously, with any property that comes on board, any new project, there's a learning curve. There's the nuances of the building and the structure and the things that from a maintenance perspective, we've had to learn. But we've had a very willing partner in Fuel and Iron, and we've leaned in on that as well with our maintenance team to help make sure we learn that and continue forward. There were some initial growing pains of just getting things in, making sure everything's running. But at this point, it appears to be a great addition to our downtown community. It's got a great level of demand that we see when people call in to inquire about it. So we're excited to continue being a part of that at this point.
Is that, is it awful?
Yes.
And did I miss it? When is the phase, when is phase four going to be projected to be done?
Phase four will, will begin in 2024, as we're laying out the entire timeline, but we have to go through a series of initial steps for asbestos testing and then abatement and all the way through to demolition, everything from there. We are working with the Denver Field Office to review that timeline as we've had the approval going back years to make sure that our timeline comports with that. So more will come at the Q1 of next year as we start.
Okay, but hopefully by beginning of 2025.
If you ask Mr. Caracato, he'd be out there at the bulldozer as soon as possible. So we are following his leadership on that, so.
Okay. And then I'm, you know, affordable housing is such a need right now. It's so crucial in the city. I really like the idea of those landlord conventions. I'm curious if, how the city can help with landlord engagement or recruiting more landlords? Do you, how can we help partner with that specifically?
You know, this is, we conducted the first one back on July, I believe, 23rd of 2023. We, we had the opportunity to have some opening remarks by the mayor, and certainly, we got that perspective that it is important from our city leadership perspective. And so what I would say at this point is, as we plan that subsequent event and we roll that out, any invitation that you can make to the individuals that you may know that have properties or may be willing to just hear information, please send them our way. I think it starts there. By beginning that education and helping to eliminate some of those narratives that are false and that are out there. Certainly, every program and every landlord can have a story of, of what may have taken place on a unit. But there's a lot of benefit beyond, you know, what we can go into in the scope of tonight's presentation that we want our landlords to hear from HUD themselves and the partnership that we're building and kind of this three-legged stool. So I think it would start there. When we send that information, if you can help spread the word and get people there. Subsequent to that, I think, you know, we can begin the conversation to look at what else we might be doing collectively as a city and certainly as an organization on our end to welcome and make it a landlord-friendly community. And there's a lot to that, and certainly, we could probably take up a whole nother evening to help do that, and we certainly happy to do that. So if anybody would have interest, I would say, reach out to me and my office, and we can talk more about that. In Q1 of next year, we'll be following up with our Denver Field Office to flush more of that, that day out and what that looks like.
Great. Yeah, I think let's continue to have that conversation for sure. And then as that date approaches sometime in 2024, if you can reach back out to us and Chief of Staff Solano about coordinating those invites.
Yep, we will certainly do that.
Great.
Yes.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Rivas. Thank you, Mr. Trujillo.
Thank you all again.
We look forward to seeing a finished project, project by end of 2024.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate your time. Take care.
Thank you. All right, and last on our agenda, we're going to hear from our friends at Health Solutions, but also our Chief of Police, Mr. Knoller and Ms. Miller regarding the Solutions Outreach Service Program that's been implemented through Health Solutions and our dispatch and PD for the past two months. So I'm excited for the snapshot about SOS.
Almost forgot my mic there. This is an update. Yeah, we've been in operation for two months in partnership with the Pueblo Police Department. Solution Outreach Services is a program developed to, in collaboration with the Public to Be Smart, Pueblo to Police Department to replicate a program similar in the Denver area called STAR. I believe you guys had a presentation from STAR. I don't recall the exact timeframe, but probably within the last year.
February.
Oh, this, just this year?
Yep, early this year.
Okay. So our goal is to free up officers so they have time to focus on safety issues while we deal or address with stabilization of behavioral health issues or other issues that may require specialization from a mental health provider as opposed to requiring a police officer responding. We also have the opportunity through this program to address some, those with unhoused issues and connect them to the appropriate resources to improve that situation and direct them to the appropriate program that they may need. So that's our bigger overview. Our team is made up of three. Oh, that's helpful. Thank you. The slides are here now. Our team is made up of three staff, a clinician, master's level clinician. We can go with a licensed clinician or unlicensed clinician for that position. We also have an EMT paramedic on our team and, and a peer, someone with lived experience who could be an advocate for those that we encounter. The services that our team will provide is the brief behavioral health interventions. Through that, we will use psychoeducational supports to guide them to community resources in the hopes that we will not see them as familiar faces for future calls. We want to reduce that cycle. We can also provide some brief first aid support or like non-emergent medical care with that EMT. And link, we want to link that individual to essential services and organizations that could help reduce the cycle of repeat calls to 911. I didn't specify in my last slide, but they, in order to get referred or dispatched to the SOS team, they will go through 911 Dispatch. So calls with these particular nature codes that the 911 Dispatch Officer will use, they can use a triage process to determine if it's appropriate for an SOS team to respond to that. Some other options for that 911 dispatcher would be a CIT or a co-responder program to respond to that call. Or they can do an officer-only call depending on that triage, triage process that they use at dispatch. But these codes could trigger an SOS call. So if somebody calls in with a citizen assist, intoxicated party, an unwanted party, someone with indecent exposure or at risk of suicidality and welfare check, those, those calls can be diverted to our SOS team and potentially reduce the need for a police officer responder. We can also do what we would call like a self-dispatch. They call it a, I haven't written down. They call it a walker stop. So if they see somebody in distress while they're driving around, they can also stop themselves and interact with that person. So far, we, like I said, we've been in operation for two months. So so far, these are the individuals we have served based on the different nature codes from the previous slide. You'll notice in the next slide that our numbers may not align with 911 Dispatch. And that's because we are basing our data on the individuals we encounter, not necessarily the calls. One call One call from nine one one dispatch can be multiple parties. So we will work with all parties, or it could be that we don't in, you know, find or locate that party. So our numbers may not align with the nine one one dispatch numbers. So these numbers are based on our internal data on the individuals that we have served um with regard to the call. So the most common call for that is the welfare check. Sixty individuals we encountered were part of that call. Um, the next one is the uh citizen assist um call. Both of those calls could have individuals that have a behavioral health or suicidal and um situation going on, but they are not necessarily flagged or coded that way. Uh, so six calls are coded as at risk for suicidality and are six individuals. I need to be careful about calling them calls. And then uh fourteen individuals we encountered had the nature code of unwanted party. Um. And then that last column, the two is for indecent exposure calls. So this is what's um I meant by our numbers may not align. These numbers are based off of nine one one dispatch. So these are uh individual calls, not necessarily the parties involved in each of those calls. Here we are demonstrating uh the first month is that first graph, uh first pie chart, and then that second pie chart is the second month. What uh the calls that could have been appropriate for an SOS team, but an SOS SOS team was not available to take that call at that time, either because it was when they were off shift or they were already on a previous call. So uh we demonstrate that um in that first month, fifty one fifty one percent of the calls could have had an S could have been appropriate for an SOS team, but they were not available. And then in the second month, sixty three percent of calls could have been appropriate for SOS team, but the we did not have an SOS team member available.
Uh, just to be clear, this is of the call types that you guys saw on the last slide, not of our total calls for service.
Correct. Correct. Of those nature calls. Um, and we learned a little bit uh that first month also uh any new process, there's a little bit of like, how do we code this? So we were, we really wanted to track if nine one one would have dispatched SOS if an SOS team was available, and there is a little bit of a learning curve on on how to make sure we code it that way. Um, the other there, the small uh wedge in the pie, seven percent on the first graph of four percent on the second graph is um representing where our SOS team responded with the DICE team. There are occasions that we would go with the team, and we wanted to highlight that there. This uh graph, we we spent a lot of time trying to figure out what shift is the best tie, what shifts are the best time for our team. And I know it's probably a lot of numbers in there. I did try to put some colors, so it helps highlight the highest uh call volume per day and time of day. And these are all calls, even if we did not have an SOS team available. So all calls, again, as Chief Knoller stated, those that would have aligned with one of those nature calls, could they have dispatched an SOS team if available? Um, we've spent a little bit of time in the last couple of months moving them on different shifts. We want to make sure our team is available when the highest need is uh for the city. So we've tried different days of the week. Uh, we started off Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, then we moved to Friday, Saturday, uh, excuse me, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Uh, we, after looking at the data, uh Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday appears to be the highest volume days. So we're going to go back to those three days. This last graph here is indicating the outcome after those calls. So in any call, we could do have multiple responses for one individual. So this doesn't necessarily als- also add up to the same numbers on the previous graph because we could provide resources for a person and provide follow-up. So there could be multiple things that we're doing here. Some of the things we want to track is the reducing of law enforcement utilization, but also redirecting those calls from other locations as opposed to our ERs. So we do track how many of those calls end up being uh referred over to our emergency room, which is three, which is the lowest. We want to maintain that as being the lowest outcome. We are also tracking how many calls we would take to our crisis services uh resource uh resource team. Um, you'll also notice this unable to contact number. There's fifteen that we were not able to contact. And at first I was talking to Chief Knoller, is that something we should worry about? Should we monitor that number? And uh that would have been a call an officer would have been responding to, and it still saves time for that officer. Instead, our SOS team will be encountering that person. Obviously, from my perspective, I would prefer we encounter the individual because the best way to stop that cycle or that continued cycle is to engage that individual and direct them to appropriate resources to reduce that cycle. But it's still, in the long run, helps out the law law enforcement officers, you know, because that frees up their time. I went through those pretty fast, but that's the end of my slides. Any questions you guys have?
Before questions, do you want to say anything, Chief?
No, I just think that, you know, this program is still in the early stages. I think it's doing uh great things for our officers in our department. Um, you know, this, this is an area, especially the calls that they're handling or or uh in areas that were not really well-suited uh to be much of help uh anyway. Um, you know, I have people that are needing psychiatric treatment or resources. Um, it's clearly better if they encounter people that can can immediately engage them in that process and in law enforcement. We can get them where they need to go, but there's a lot of things that can happen in the interim that that prevent them from uh accepting those those resources, I think. And this is a great program for that. It also frees up my officers to go do other things. Uh uh, these calls oftentimes in our experience are are really big time sucks uh uh for officers. They they take a long time when you're taking somebody to the ER, uh, which is where we typically would take them. Uh, you could be in the ER for hours uh uh till that person gets seen and you're you're able to to step back out onto the street. So even with the limited number of calls and the the obvious need for more of these teams, um, it still is allowing my officers. It's 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 giving us manpower back in in spades. It's it's really uh um worth its weight in gold, I think.
Well, great. Exciting. Counselor Flores?
But do you keep track of how many of the individuals you had contact with are homeless?
So yes and no, like not in the data that I pulled readily for this. However, we do have a process where we will connect them through coordinated entry. Uh, so I can pull it another way. I'd have to pull it out of our um uh HMIS system, Homeless Management Information System, Health Solutions inputs individuals who are unhoused through that process. And uh we are still, fortunately, because we're working with the state to build this in HMIS, we don't have that data at our hands right now because we have to build out the report off of HMIS. So I will eventually have that data to indicate how many of the people we're encountering who are unhoused. We are not only seeing referring through coordinate entry, but also at what rate do they move through our system in coordinate entry to housed states, right? Or a resolution, it may not be housed in traditional affordable housing, but maybe in another program we can get them connected to. Uh, that data will all be available to me at some point in HMIS, but the report's not built yet because the state agency has to build it.
So so when you make contact with an individual that has a mental crisis of some sort uh and you see him on a specific date um and you make the, you know, determination that they really need to see seek more mental health, uh, do you, are you able to follow up with them within your big system? Uh, and uh if you can talk them into doing it, obviously.
Yeah.
Uh, but they they do have access to all of your other services uh if they're in a cooperative mood, I guess, and uh.
Yeah, certainly they could have access to any. We can get them connected. We've done different things where we've ca- taken them directly to open access to enroll. We've tracked that occasionally. Um, what is important here is not just connecting them to Health Solutions, though. We we do want to follow patient choice.
Sure.
So we will connect them to the appropriate resource that will and we will, you know, follow that process. We are doing some follow-up. We are, the team is busy, so it's hard to do consistent follow-up. But we have other systems at Health Solutions that can provide that follow-up for those calls if the follow-up is necessary.
And that my last question has to do with who's the decision maker? I guess it, uh, I guess it's the dispatcher in nine one one. Uh, it's a critical period right at that point. Somebody has to make the decision whether to involve an officer or or whether or not this pro- process uh and and we're still in the infancy. So uh I'm sure we're going to learn a lot of things going forward. Are you satisfied, I guess, with um the training that they've received? That they can pass this uh on to the SOS team and not involve an officer?
Yeah, absolutely. There's a couple of things. I mean, obviously, safety of the SOS team is a is a factor that we care greatly about. We don't want to send them on a call where they could, you know, knowing ahead of time that they could have been placed in danger and still send them rather than an officer. But yeah, we work uh, we worked very closely with uh Denver STAR. Um, we sent some people up to Denver uh to see what they were doing up there. We're worked very closely with Health Solutions in modeling or not modeling, but in determining the factors that would dictate whether it would be a co-responder CIT model, which we still have, um where a a clinician is riding with an officer. Um, and or whether we send just officers or or the SOS team, and it's it's constantly under evaluation. I think one of the reasons why you see an increase in the second month in the number of calls that could have used a SOS uh provider is that training that we were able to give our dispatchers. So now they're recognizing more calls that could have been sent to SOS rather than just the the ones they did in the first month. So.
Do does an officer have, uh, maybe he arrives at a site where there's a mental health crisis or something that would fit with SOS? Can at that point, can an officer make that determination that?
Hmm.
You know?
Absolutely.
And that way they're freed up a couple hours.
Yep, they would uh they would probably stand by till SOS arrived on scene. Um, but yeah, they could absolutely do that if if SOS wasn't tied up on another call.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Counselor Martinez-Ratega?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you, Ms. Miller and Chief for um that presentation and that there's no, uh, I don't have a question. But um kudos to this partnership and like you're saying, freeing people uh uh the police up for more police um activities as opposed to where health aid professionals need to help um in certain cer- certain instances, just good job. This is great towards public safety.
Counselor Graham?
Ms. Miller, do you know if any of these clients are repetitive?
Uh, I don't know right now. I can pull, we have the ability to pull that data. I just didn't bring it for this presentation. But it is part of our, we have it available to us, yes.
And and when your team makes contact, um, did they do like an identification process? Because I'm sure that some of these individuals maybe don't have it. So how do you track?
Like, you mean, like, do we check their ID?
Just, yeah, I mean, do they?
I mean, I wouldn't say necessarily we can, I suppose. I don't, that's probably.
Yeah, I was not necessarily checking their ID, but just making sure they are.
Who they say they are?
Just just for um purposes of being able to track if one individual is being called on several times within the week and you know, what area of town and what that looks like. Is that all being tracked or?
That's a great question. I actually don't know if I know that answer. I don't know. Did we do that? Sorry. I can't hear that answer. Oh, sorry. Oh, um, I'll I'll relay. Uh, uh, sometimes we may not have their name uh so that we don't. Yeah. Yeah, so it's possible we do not have their full correct information.
And what about uh like what side of town or where the location is? Are you tracking all that?
We do track the address for the call, correct.
And is there a significant point in Pueblo where the majority of these calls are coming from?
That's a great question. I don't know if I know the answer.
Okay.
Does Chief, do you know? Keep that?
Uh, we would be able to pull that. I I do not know the answer to that um uh today. Um, we certainly could find that out if that's something you would like to know.
Sure, thank you.
I have a very similar question about frequent flyers. And so I'm I'm curious, I guess, like how that can be tracked around, you know, just just tracking that in the future. I know that um that might be a possible collaboration with our DOTS program, considering they also really are targeting those frequent flyers, those frequent callers. Um, I'm cur- I mean, I, it seems like such great data and such a help both with increasing, you know, our behavioral health capacity, which is so needed, and also increasing the amount of times that time that police can actually be on the streets. How do we get more than one unit?
So it's uh comes down to being able to prove prove sustainability. So we have to demonstrate that the team can uh pay for their way, right? We have to be able to prove the sustainability of the program, and it just requires a little bit more time to track the data. Uh, the uh grant funds the upstart of the, you know, the startup of the pro- program, and then we have to make it sustainable over time.
Yeah, I get, I'm super, I guess, excited then to see that data at the, you know, whether that's in ninety days, you know, at the end of next year. Um, just because the data looks really strong right now and just anecdotally from Chief Knoller, it's it seems like a great program. And so if we can advocate for increasing the capacity or increasing that, you know, doubling the team, that would be fantastic. In a perfect world, if I had my.
Yeah, I agree. Um, I I think uh um, you know, I speaking about money and all that stuff, uh, you know, it it does need to be uh sustainable um in order for it to be effective, but I think, you know, we've clearly shown a need for for this um and and adding capacity would be ideal uh for sure.
Counselor Warner, did you have anything?
I did. Um, I do like the fact that you could be proactive. You mentioned that if uh somebody is um just out and about in the city and they see somebody in need, they can actually approach them without kind of chasing their tails, waiting for a phone call. Um, how often have they done proactive approaches? Or is this something that you're just thinking about? You'd mentioned it, so I wanted to know more about that.
Uh, we do, um, we do do it and track it. It's usually they can only do it if they're not tied up with a call, like they need to be available to nine one one dispatch. And so it doesn't happen as often as you may think because they do respond to nine one one dispatch calls first as a priority if they have some downtime or availability and they encounter someone on the street. So it is an option. It is available, but it doesn't happen in a great frequency as of right now.
Okay, because I know myself just driving around the city, I mean, if I was one of those social workers, I definitely could have stopped probably several times a day. Um, just any day that I'm out driving around. So I think that would be great if you could be pro- more proactive in the future. Um, also, you mentioned some heightened times, and those go right in with um the ER. The ER is definitely more busy between say noon and midnight or noon and seven o'clock in the evening than they are any other time. Um, so that's great if you can uh you know, in the future, get more people, especially during those hours, to keep those folks out of ER as well. Um, Denver STAR, and I think you probably know these numbers, but it might be something helpful for everybody to hear that in the last year they had four hundred and seventy-six encounters of homeless folks and a hundred and eleven were referred to other agencies. And um forty-five percent were not ready to come off the streets. Um, so I think those are some pretty good numbers. So I'm I'm sure that you'll have success there. Um. There was something else I wanted to mention. Oh, uh, as far as an ID, I know that my experience in the ER anyway, with a lot of these homeless folks is that um I would say one hundred percent were on Medicaid, so they should have some kind of form of ID. And if they're on Medicaid, you should be I mean, aren't you getting paid when you encounter these folks?
We we can bill Medicaid for some codes. It's uh there are several factors that would uh require us to be able to bill those codes, and some of that is uh being able to confirm who they are. That's that's important. Uh, and then we have to confirm their insurance uh status, and then they can be billed. That is certainly part of our long-term sustainability plan is making sure.
Hmm, but but right now you're not necessarily getting names and social security numbers to refer to.
We are, yes, it doesn't.
I thought I thought you said you didn't really know who they were.
Sometimes we don't know.
Oh, sometimes. You know, I'm sorry about that. I couldn't hear what the um other person was saying since they weren't on a mic, so I just wanted you to clarify that. Um, all right. How is this funded? Is it through federal grants or how are you getting your money right now for the one unit?
We do have a state grant uh that we are currently using to start the program.
How many units does uh the Denver STAR program have?
Well, I don't know if I can answer that. Well, I don't know if I can answer that. Anything I would say would be a guess.
Okay. Do you know?
Six. Sorry.
Six.
Six.
Okay, so four hundred and seventy six homeless people, six units. I would be curious to wonder how many units they, on those four hundred and seventy six account, encounters that, that they had with homeless people. I'd be curious to know if those were all just proactive approaches. Can you, can you find out, Chief? Or are you, Ms. Miller?
I suppose we could reach out to them. I don't know. My, my assumption would be that it would be, most of those would be dispatched contacts and very few of them, a smaller, a much smaller percentage would be proactive. But.
Yeah, four hundred and seventy six account, encounters is quite a few. Like maybe not in a year, I guess. Well, yeah. That's still.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I, to me, that seems kind of low for a year in Denver. That doesn't seem like a very high number. My, my guess is that those are going to be your dispatched calls where they send SOS unit. The way it works out, it has worked out statistically when we were looking back on the calls we would have sent the SOS team to prior to, prior to it being formed. I think we ended up with like three percent of our calls would have been routed to, to the SOS team. I think we're still seeing roughly that same percentage in, you know, in Denver. I think that they were seeing roughly the same, roughly three percent of the total call load for the PD was routed to their STAR teams. So I think that's why you have that four hundred number.
Yeah. Well, that's still like forty people a month that you're referring. Or a hundred, I guess only a hundred and eleven wanted to be referred, but.
Yeah, I believe from the slide, there was a hundred and nine clients over the last two months. That could be, basically, like I said, we could have multiple.
No, 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 I'm talking about Denver right now.
I apologize.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have. Thanks.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you, Chief Knoller. We look forward to seeing the data in six-ish months. And then hopefully getting another unit in the next year. I have a lot of wishes tonight, I guess. All right. Then that concludes the work session at six forty two PM. The regular meeting will start around seven PM. So we'll see you then.